The meeting in order. Roll call.
Councilmember Ampadaka.
Here.
Councilmember Eugenio.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Bernworth.
Here.
Mayor Dale.
I'm here.
Councilmember Tucker is absent for the record.
Okay, let's stand for our pledge of allegiance. And Kim Phillips, would you lead us in the flags?
Hey, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's two adjustments. First of all, on your check register, number 1025162, Roe Engineering should be pulled and handled separately. A second adjustment is that, as you know, there is a special meeting that we noticed for the same time as this meeting to deal with the urban water management plan. So in essence, you will be combining B1 of your special meeting agenda with F7 of your regular meeting agenda. And we would ask that you handle that after G1, which is a successor agency matter that's on your agenda. So it would be essentially last, and you will open a public hearing and invite comment on the urban water management plan.
Mr. Mayor, if you would like to move special presentations up in the agenda, now would be the time to do that.
Yeah, I'd like to move D above C. We're just gonna flip-flop public appearances with special presentations.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. I think we can just do this on all, all in favor?
You can do all in favor because no one is appearing virtually.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, announcements of action taken in closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I have no action to report.
Okay, all right. Then with that, we're gonna just speed right into D then. Uh, D1 Imperial High School mural and artists.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I know the mayor has some certificates in front of him that he would like to read and some students present. Uh, this did come about by recognition of a few members of the community that there are some wonderful murals that have been painted at Imperial High School. I'd like to also welcome Principal Joe Apodaca if he would like to come up and say anything about his students. Um, but we would like to give them a recognition. We have a quick video that we would like to play for the community of those. So since we're having some audio difficulties, these are just some of the murals that are currently painted. My understanding is there are also additional murals that will be painted on the rest of the wall, and those are in the design phase. So we're excited to see what all of those are. But the messages and the community activism coming together have been fantastic.
I'm old school. My car name, come on here. Not that tall. Or the same.
Just to touch on what the mayor is talking about, the City of Imperial Arts District Advisory Committee will be hosting a mural campaign for our downtown, Imperial Downtown. And we will be adopting some standards and guidelines at an upcoming council meeting. And following that, we would invite you to solicit murals that you would like to see painted in the downtown of Imperial that do depict the heritage and historical attributes of the city of Imperial. So we're excited about that, and we hope that you guys will participate and look forward to the creativity that will bring some inspiration to our community. Thank you.
On now to D2 Law Enforcement Appreciation Week. Okay, can you hear me okay? So did they hear me before? That means all the kids have to come back up and we have to go to work again. Okay, all right. Okay, National Law Enforcement Appreciation Week, January 9th through the 15th, 2022. Whereas National Law Enforcement Appreciation Week is recognized by the multiple organizations to express their gratitude for law enforcement officers in the United States of America. And whereas the health and safety of all City of Imperial residents is important to the happiness and prosperity and well-being of our families and our community. And whereas the City of Imperial has a population now of 20,289 and is the proud home of many law enforcement officers. And whereas the City of Imperial Police Department has 23 sworn police officers, which play an integral part of our society and are guardians of our way of life. And whereas the City of Imperial Council appreciates the extraordinary efforts and sacrifices made by our officers and their families on a daily basis in order to protect our schools, workplaces, roadways, homes, and visitors. Whereas the City of Imperial recognizes an increase in negativity directed towards our law enforcement and encourages the Imperial community to show their appreciation for our officers in these difficult times. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Imperial, City Council proclaim the week of January 9th through the 15th, 2022 as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Week in the City of Imperial. And be it further resolved that the City of Imperial, the City Council call upon citizens of Imperial, California to take time not only during the week as proclaimed, but throughout the entire month of January to show their support in the Imperial Police Department and fellow law enforcement officers proclaimed at the regular meeting of the City of Imperial, City Council held on the 19th day of January, 2022. Chief, your officers, gentlemen, ladies, you guys have done just an incredible job in the last few years. Chief, you've turned this department to something that we're so proud of, and I know that the county appreciates and is proud of what the City of Imperial's accomplished. Year after year after year, we see the numbers and we see what you've done in this community and where we sit in the state on as far as how safe we are. And we're right there at the very top, just every year. So the community, folks that are here tonight, you can't get any better officers than what you have in the City of Imperial. So thank you very much.
What is buying ice cream? Yes. Thank you guys very much.
Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to public appearances.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, if I could, if I could just say uh, thank you for all of the parents and students that came. This is that awkward moment of the agenda where you say to yourself, the reason we came here has been handled. How do we get out of here and not be so obvious? And so I would just suggest, Mr. Mayor, that you take a few seconds. You're more than welcome to stay. For those of you interested in getting a free civics lesson, you're more than welcome to stay. But I understand, I understand the reason you came has been handled. And so you should, you should feel free to take care of any of your, I'm sure you have homework to do and you're anxious to get to that, so.
Point well taken, and if you stay past five minutes, we're putting you to work, so.
I do recognize that there were two more students that just happened to sneak in. So if, uh, if we could just have them stand up and say their name rather quickly?
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Did we make sure and get the? Okay, perfect.
Mr. Apodaca has, has all the students, just that we did have 45 students involved in those murals. So recognize some that are here tonight. Thank you all so, so much for coming and being a part of tonight. Um, and we just thank you for your creativity, and we look forward to what else comes up on those walls and in our downtown.
Please feel free, it's only like a three-hour agenda.
It's a long one. Run.
I was just kidding.
Thank you again.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
What's the, uh, that song and the, all the memes and stuff where they go run?
Exactly.
They're out, they're gone.
Oh.
Mr. Apodaca. Mr. Apodaca.
Yeah, I carried it back up here. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we're gonna roll in now to public appearances. Uh, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, uh, please raise your hand and, and be acknowledged by the mayor. And at that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves a right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. As requested, longer presentations be submitted to council in writing. Sir, step up to the podium. And if you wouldn't mind to pull the, pull the microphone back. I pulled it forward there. There you go, sir. Thank you.
Name is Dempsey Black. Live on, uh, 2334 Tumbleweed Avenue. I got a, a courtesy notice about my wall or fence, whatever you want to call it. It's, it's been called several things since I've been dealing with this. And I just kinda wanted to run some stuff across you. Got a couple of neighbors here with the same problem.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, got this little notice on my fence the other day. And called, uh, Mr. Ramirez up. And, uh, was trying to get some information from him about what's, what, how am I gonna address this in three days? When it's been like that for 10 or 12 years? And I've, I went through the city. I went back and forth with the city about why did they even allow that wall to be built with no rebar in it? It's not, it wasn't put up right in the first place. He says, well, it's not a wall, it's a fence. Well, you permitted it. The City of Imperial permitted it. And then, huh, 10, 12 years later, I get a notice. It's an unsafe wall. It's unsafe to the public. Then you allow IED to go over. The wall was standing up fine until IED, you allowed them to go over, permitted them to go over and underground the piping on the, uh, east side of La Bushery and just shook the hell out of it. I mean, it shook my house and everything. Three o'clock in the morning. I complained, I complained, I complained. We were permitted, city permitted us to work these hours. Tried to get them to kick in some money on. They opened up the brick so bad, you could stick your hand, you can see through it. You can see the cars passing. It wasn't like that before that. They don't wanna kick no money in either. And then I tell this Ramidis, well, what do I'm gonna do? I'm gonna put a fence, then my neighbor's gonna put a fence. And I've tried to hit a contractor to come. And he says if he cuts it between those columns where the, where those bricks sit in there, shaky bricks sit in there. If he cuts between those columns and the neighbor's fence falls down, then the neighbor's gonna sue me. Well, I don't want that, I don't want that to happen, so. I, I, I just, I don't, I, then, I don't understand why.
Sir, we get, hang on just for a second. Is there something we can do with this, Dennis, to discuss this further?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, what I would suggest is that I will, I will get with the department that Mr. Ramirez works in, have a discussion with them, and then we'll be contacting you. And hopefully, we can come up with some options that'll work.
He's sure not a very good city, city, uh, person, I tell you, to talk to on the phone. He's very, very rude, very rude. I tried to get some answers from him. I've tried to get some answers from other people, and they refer you to other people. They say get on the computer, get online. I'm 75 years old, I don't know anything about computers. I don't know anything about iPhones.
Mr. Black, what I would like to do is to give our city manager a chance to, to deal with this straightforward, and he will get back in contact with you.
And this is, and this is what I don't understand. And I've, I have suggested it to your manager and your, your inspectors. Why don't they tear the whole dang wall out and replace it with a nice wall like they got over here on Ayton Road? Or, you know, make everybody's look the same? And then bill into each individual? If each individual goes and puts a, if my neighbor puts a fence up block, am I gonna be able to put a wood fence up? I can't afford $18,000 out of my pocket, and I'm sure some of my other neighbors can't either.
Unfortunately, sometimes, and I am gonna say this, and it's probably out of context, but I am gonna say, I went through something very similar, development that was here in the valley, particularly here in the Imperial, that they built a wall that they didn't use treated wood. And termites ate it, but it was a stuccoed wall. And with wind, it blew down. Unfortunately, I had to pay for it. But ultimately, it was a developer. Unfortunately, sometimes we're stuck with what developers do. And in this case, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but that's what we're up against. But I would like for this, we can go long on this tonight, Mr. Black, but I would like our city manager to be able to take care of this, and he will get back with you.
My, my problem is, is, uh, when, when them places were built, your inspectors inspected it, and your inspectors okayed it. And I don't understand why the homeowner is, is obligated to pay for the whole thing. I mean, it wasn't put up right in the first place.
Like I said, we will, we will definitely get back with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do I need to submit this? So you have my phone number now?
Yes. By all means.
Address is 2320 Tumbleweed Avenue. I've got the same notice he did. And he's correct, he was kinda rude, your inspector, you know? He just said you need to replace the whole wall. I said, I can't do this in three, three days or maybe three years, I don't know. But, uh, like he said, uh, he is correct. I mean, I've been there since they built that house. And they did not build that correctly, so I don't know how it got approved. Did not. And like I told him, down my house, uh, there's a basin at the end of that with city property, just put fence up like that, same thing. So I don't know if they're gonna, city's gonna fix that fence or what? Same wall. It's the same wall my wall is. So I'm in the same boat he is.
Did you, uh, give the information? You got that too, okay?
Yes, 2320 Tumbleweed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for coming.
I'm also part of that same thing. I'm just to clarify what the area is, I'm sure everybody's seen it. It's a, as you drive down La Bushery between Joshua Tree and Trescho, the walls are on the west side, they're all falling down. Um, the bricks are, I mean, it's, it's terrible. But, um, now we all have to fix this, but the city's part is worse than anybody else's. There's bricks missing, they, they put up a chain link fence there that doesn't stop anything, it's still falling. So, um, it's rather unfair that we have to fix ours when the city hasn't fixed ours.
Yeah, and we walk our dogs by there, so it is, I mean, it could fall on us, and the part of the city hasn't been fixed there for what? We've been almost 20 years? And we walk our dogs in the city, I mean, part of it belongs to the city where the water basin is, and that hasn't been fixed. And I think that reason why we all got this notice was because we did put part of the wall ourselves. We had, we live in the corner lot at 2330 Tumbleweed, and we have a corner lot, so where we had our wooden fence, we got it replaced by the block wall just this last month. So when the inspector came, I think that's when he saw part of our wall being built where we had our wooden, and he noticed all the wall. And I think that's when the ticket started. Cause he's, he, you know, he had to approve our wall, you know, for the wooden. Um, I did show up to the city about a week ago after he gave us that ticket or infraction. And I spoke to Mr. Ramirez, and yes, he was very rude as to explaining, uh, what the ticket was, how long we have. I said, you know, we'll plan to fix it, it's not fair. It was approved when we bought the house. I mean, it doesn't have any rebar, anything, it's just a fence. Um, contrary to Cody, Cody was very, you know, he was very understanding. We know when I talked to Cody, the other inspector, but Mr. Ramirez just wouldn't give us a good explanation. So I just think that, um, it's not fair that we have to replace something that was approved by the city, as Mr. Black stated. Um, and you do have some emails before from, right, from the city?
After the earthquake. Back and forth them. All structure.
And the wall would not have gotten so bad if I had, if it had been built correctly, you know, after the earthquake and now with the IED making it worse, as Mr. Black stated, 3, 4 in the morning, the house shaking, worse, worse than a seven point something.
It was, it was a constant, I'd say like a 3.0 earthquake constantly.
Probably worse.
Please stand up at the microphone. Yes.
Uh, 509 Mesquite Street, Travis Fusey. I think they hit everybody down the line on La Bushery and just kinda gave them the three-day notice, which was kind of interesting. But yeah, same thing these guys are saying happened to me, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you. Yes, sir. Good night. Okay, moving on to C two, or first of all, is there anybody else like to speak at this time?
Mr. Mayor, we did receive an electronic submission for public comment on a non-agendized item.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, we did receive before the five o'clock deadline, an email submittal, and as indicated, uh, uh, in, in our process that permits an email submittal, it is indicated that it would be read into the, the record. I'm, I'm going to read this, the, the, what was submitted. I'm, I'm going to read it verbatim, as submitted, and I, I will use a norm, at least my normal speaking cadence, as with other public appearances, it will be timed. Three minutes is, it will be the limit. This document is a matter of public record, since it was submitted to us. We have some copies that are here. If anybody wants to obtain a copy, then they could make a Public Records Act request, and if it's submitted, and if it's provided electronically, there will not be any charge. If you want a hard copy, we have normal copy charges. Now, there are some, in addition to the submittal, there are some attachments that if I get that far, it would be not my intention to read, but, but they are available to anybody who wants to obtain a copy. One of the attachments appears to be something from the City of Imperial Police Department from November of twenty-twenty. That is, that by all appearances is from our, our Chief of Police. There is then a multiple-page document that has, makes reference to the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. And then, lastly, there is an attachment that, that suggests it's from the Employment Development Department, and it's entitled Notice of Unemployment Insurance Claim Filed. So with that, so that, that, the timer will start when I, when I start reading the document, and I, I now know what the alert sounds like when three minutes hits, so, so I will, I will stop at that point. And so here's the document, and as indicated, I'm going to read it verbatim and, and as it's, as it's submitted. So, "To Clerk of the City of Imperial, per your public instruction, I present this letter as public comments to be read and incorporated into the minutes of your regular session meeting of the City Council to be held at seven o'clock P M. on January nineteen, twenty-twenty-two via livestream and in person after closed session meeting at six-thirty P M. Please stop violating my constitutional rights. Please stop violating my civil rights. Black and white facts. Catherine Bernworth and I exchanged thirty-five thousand dollars between February and May of twenty-twenty in two separate transactions, one for twenty-five thousand and another for ten thousand. Catherine Bernworth and I have more than six fully executed contracts for various stock amounts from one-eighty-nine, four-oh-seven, two-five-seven. All of these contracts are ripe with errors. All of these contracts state the incorrect seller, which is the Christopher Mars Living Trust dated July seven, two thousand and ten. None of these contracts have ever been presented to a Board of Directors at Humble Farmer Brewing Company, Inc. by me for cancellation of my stock certificates and conversion to any amount. The Board of Directors nominate officer positions. Catherine Bernworth has never owned a share of Humble Farmer Brewing Company, Inc. Recently, as I did have possession of some documents that should have been at our corporate office located at fourth thirty-eight Walnut Avenue, Hoville, California, nine-two-two-five-oh. I shipped the documents on January three, twenty-twenty-two. Per our corporate bylaws, if a stock certificate is lost or stolen, in order for the stock certificate to be transferred, the owner of the certificates must obtain a bond in the amount that the certificates are worth. In my instance, this is one-hundred-twenty-five-thousand dollars. I never placed a bond, and I have not received any notice from our insurance carrier, Catherine Bernworth, or any attorney, that the bond is in place. Instead of following our corporate bylaws, Catherine Bernworth nominated herself as Director Officer and sent that information to the California Department of Alcoholic and Beverage Control, California's Secretary of State's office, and placed in her pockets thousands of dollars far greater than thirty-five thousand dollars. Due to Mrs. Bernworth holding a public office, we have a lot of issues with this undisclosed ownership both ways, with her running for office at the location via social media and at the property promoting city events, all of which fall under the California Political Reform Act of nineteen-seventy-four, as it appears that this thirty-five thousand dollars for an undisclosed campaign contribution, and we have some other documents, I'm going to finish the sentence, and we have some other documents at the city that should have disclosed the ownership under Chapter Seven, Conflict of Interest. So, the, the, the document goes on, aside from the attachments, for four and a half pages, and as indicated, it will be, it's available for anybody interested in obtaining a cop, a complete copy.
Do we, uh?
Mr. Mayor, we did not receive any other electronic comments for items on or off the agenda.
All right, and C two, address appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand by the mayor, and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name, address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. Any else like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we move on to consent agenda. Okay, now we're going to be pulling one of those.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, number one oh two five one six should be handled separately. It's payable to Rove Engineering.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay, we have the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Mayor, make a motion to approve warrant one zero two five one six for Rove Engineering.
Motion carries four zero.
Motion stands. Make a motion to approve warrant one zero two five one six for Rove Engineering.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Motion carries three, one abstention.
Now, we need to go ahead and do the whole consent agenda, correct? Because we moved that just a separate item.
No, we took both, so we can move on to action.
All right, action items, F one, discussion, action, budget, and planning services.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, in similar fashion to last meeting, I did reference in past strategic planning, as well as some direction that came out of the trip to League of California Cities. The mayor, immediate past mayor and council had set as their priorities, budget planning and transparency, wanting to elevate our, our budget into the next engagement cycle, if you will. The City of Imperial did reach out to several service providers and did conclude their due diligence period with all those, and it is ultimately recommended that we do engage with OpenGov in a contract for budget and planning services. We do have on your agenda this evening for the consideration of that, and again, it's to improve transparency in the city's budget and planning process. I do have Andrew on Zoom with OpenGov. He will be able to give an overview as to what those services do and tell. We are recommending to move forward with the full five-year term of the contract. These are to be paid with ARPA funds, and this is to recover costs that we have endured during the pandemic, and Andrew can go into more detail as to how the service does help with that, as well as achieve all of the other visions of the council as well. So, Andrew, I will leave it to you.
Great, thank you, Alexis, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Appreciate you giving me a couple of minutes here to present our solution here at OpenGov and give a brief overview of who we are. I'll try to keep things pretty quick here, probably just five to ten minutes or so, and then open it up for questions. Alexis, want to move the slide forward? Perfect. So specifically, what we'll be going over here today is OpenGov's budgeting and planning suite for streamlining and enhancing the operating budget, capital planning, workforce planning, creating a public online budget book, as well as a reporting and transparency platform, so really improving your reporting out of your accounting system, being able to share information both internally with department heads to council, or if you'd like, out to the public to tell the city's story. You know, quick background on OpenGov, we are a mission-driven company. Our mission's to power more effective and accountable government. And so with that, everything we do is built from the ground up with local government in mind. And we also do have other solutions around procurement, citizen services for online permitting and licensing, as well as a full-fledged accounting system. But for today's presentation, we'll focus specifically on the budgeting and the reporting suite. Go to the next slide. Really enjoy working with the team over the past four or five months or so, including Dennis, Alexis, and Laura, the Finance Director. As we've been having, you know, conversations, I think kind of the overall theme that we had heard was a citywide goal to update technology to help better engage residents, to show transparency, and to help staff be more efficient as they're, you know, budgeting and planning their way out of, you know, what's been a pretty crazy one or two years. Some of the challenges that we have heard is that budget is pretty difficult to understand for residents or anyone who doesn't understand local government finance. And then on the internal side, just a lot of really manual cumbersome type processes that are very time-consuming and error-prone. So I think we heard about sixty different worksheets that all had to come together in order to create the budget. And along with being, you know, really time-consuming, it's really hard to then do things like strategic forecasting, planning, do multi-year budgeting and things like that. We'd also talked a little bit about procurement process, but again, we're going to leave that off for, for today's presentation. And so some of the goals that OpenGov believes that we can help the city with is really better engaging and informing residents on budgetary, budgetary goals, as well as citywide strategic goals, being able to take information out of your accounting system, out of your budget, being able to share really in an easy-to-understand way online, as well as helping staff be more efficient by streamlining the budget process, typically by anywhere from twenty-five to fifty percent, and allowing the ability to do a lot more analysis and forecasting in the budget. Want to go to the next one? The solution is really built for kind of the end-to-end budget process, so really one platform for creating the budget, publishing the budget, sharing, reporting and information, and then engaging residents on the strategic plan, as the city is doing the same process year over year. Want to go to the next one? And I guess before I go on, you know, Alexis, you know, anything else to add here? You know, anything that I missed as far as some of the strategic goals that you feel this, this product might help the city with?
No, I think you, you hit that in a nutshell. I think at the end of the presentation, in addition to if they have any questions, I'm sure some of the council members can add their comments as to, to what they are looking to achieve. Obviously, always projecting for the future, being able to use trend analysis and what-if forecasting are specifics as to, to being able to keep us on target and fiscally responsible in our budget. And so we know that those are also achieved through your cloud budgeting-based system. So those are just a couple of things, and I think we'll get into that, and council can explain further what they're looking for.
Great. So, you know, again, kind of just going back to our, our mission-driven focus here, a lot of our team actually comes from careers in local government. I think this is a pretty big differentiator for us, you know, both on the development side. So the solution that we're building is, is built by folks who have, you know, really been in local government in cities and counties, but also the team that's going to support you in getting the project deployed are these types of folks. So someone who truly understands local government finance and can offer a kind of a consultative type of approach, you know, if you are looking to, you know, improve and employ best practices in the budget process. Going to next one. We are, so we are headquartered in, in California, up in Redwood City, just between San Jose and San Francisco, and we do work with about two hundred and forty or so different cities, counties, and special districts throughout the state. Want to go to the next one? You know, as far as just overall goals and, and, you know, kind of just as an average of what we see for customers who utilize the solution, anywhere from twenty-five to fifty percent less time spent on budget development, fifty to eighty percent less time spent on reporting, reduction in FOIA requests, just making information easier to understand, and online kind of offers a self-service type of approach, and then also freeing of budget. So, you know, when you really get a good view into where funds are going, we see staff is better to really be efficient in where they go and actually free up funds for strategic initiatives. Cool. And then as far as the solution detail, you can go through this pretty quick. I just wanted to share a couple screenshots here. Again, really, the solution is built to be a centralized tool for operating personnel and capital budgeting, and then also create, creation of a digital budget book. So there's just a couple of screenshots there as an example. Go to the next one. You know, centralizing the reporting and analysis. Again, we're going to be integrated directly with the city's financial system, pulling out information on a nightly basis so you're able to, you know, quickly view and track updates as they happen. You can also use this to create dashboards for specific departments, for management, or we've seen some cities that do this for, for council as well. So if you wanted to have a couple of, you know, key reports, you can have that available and, you know, within a click, see how you're tracking on against certain criteria. Then lastly, citizen engagement. So again, any information that we have in the system can be shared externally. I will note, the city has full control over what goes out and what is shared. That provides a good way to help, you know, show transparency, increase public trust, and also provide an outlet for residents to ask any questions if you'd like. And then just a couple of, you know, customer examples, you know, regularly see hundreds of hours saved in creating, creating a budget, especially the budget book. So Yukai actually saved about six hundred hours and about eighty-seven thousand a year creating the budget, also increased resident involvement, and made the whole process collaborative for staff. Go to the next one. And then Mono County was a good example of one who was able to really realize where they had been funding things or overfunding things for years and years, and with the budget solution getting better insight into where funds were going, we're able to reallocate around two million dollars or so. I won't go through all these one by one, but just a few more examples here of, of, you know, some of the results that our customers have seen. And then the last one that I'll end on here is, is just customer support and experience. You know, for us, I think, almost as important as the actual software is the team that's supporting the city, that's deploying the city, and then, you know, on an ongoing basis, you know, if you're looking to make changes and updates, really having a partner who's there who, you know, is going to pick up the phone, is going to answer any questions, it's going to be consultative, it can provide best practices. We put a really, really big focus on this. You know, everything that we do is an unlimited type of approach, so all of the support is all included with the annual subscription. You get unlimited users. And then additionally, as we're building in updates to the platform, which come out every two weeks to a month, those are all included as well at no additional charge. So just a really big focus that we put on our customer experience and support here at OpenGov, and we find that leads to successful projects and, you know, successful partnerships. That was the, I guess, the lightning round, the quick overview of OpenGov and who we are, and I'll open it up for any questions.
Maybe Robert. I, can I go before you?
Of course.
Okay. This is something I was really excited about. Last year in Sacramento, when we went to the League of Cities, and it's one of the resources that's really going to modernize our city, especially since we're one of the fastest-growing, we're one of the top ten fastest-growing cities in the state of California. fastest-growing cities in the state of California. And one of the things that the, that I loved about this resource was, correct me if I'm wrong, there's an annotation feature that we as a council can use as integration with the budget as it's being produced. And so traditionally, when the budget is being created, we're given these huge documents and then every time we make, and they're printed out, so it's a huge waste of paper. Every time the changes are made to those, to that budget, that has to be reprinted out until we get to the the proper, you know, budget before it can be approved. But this is all digital. It allows us to interact without having to get out the highlighter and your glasses and spend seven hours looking at the budget closely if you do so. So I just, I just love this this program, what I learned about it. And I feel like we can't afford not to modernize as a city. Okay, Robert.
I'll let Katie go.
Was this put out first solicitation or is this a sole source? Purchase?
It was, it's not a sole source. There were other solutions that were considered. And we considered that as a group internally amongst department heads.
I will say that as far as certain features that OpenGov has, because you can do individual how they, and Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but the individual suites that OpenGov does provide as far as budget and planning procurement, you can solicit those individually with others, but they are the only that has them all together as well as the integration factor directly with our system. So in that regard, but we did solicit other quotes and go through demonstrations with, similar with budget and planning providers.
So I just have a couple of questions and I was there with Corinne when we were looking at this and it was, it was really exciting. But, you know, one of the things that I still like to go back and look is my budget book, even before I come back to the meeting, I opened it up. Laura made it really simple. I just go to the tab, tells me how much everything is. So, you know, when you're asking for that pump rebuild, I know that it's, it is in the budget and we can go back and look at it. But one of the things that I'd like to, one of the questions I do have is, is is this, does this have a feature that's at a glance, if I'm sitting here and I, for some reason, didn't look at the budget to see if that pump was in there, can I bring it up right now and see and view it here?
Yes.
And it'll, and it'll give me true figures, true cost?
Yes. So one of the, and I know that Andrew, you had mentioned as far as you're pulling data daily. Obviously, our systems are a little bit different. So I believe it's every 15 days that that we post with with the general ledger. So it'd be about a bi-weekly that it would be generating actual numbers. But with the budget itself, you would be able to drill right in and be able to pull up, okay, what exactly was in that budget in that line item?
The other one is, is one of my big things this year with budget was, sorry, was fuel cost, tracking fuel cost inflation. And we had to make modifications for that. Will this program allow us to project for the inflation above and beyond what is projected? Let's say, I know right now we're at what, 5.8%? I think that's where we're at.
Yeah, and it just keeps, I was going to say, I think that's on a, on the way conservative side of things. And I think our parks and public services can probably give you a much better idea as to what they're doing with fuel right now.
That's one of those let's go Brandon things.
But, but that does, that does factor into, yes, the what-if forecasting and how we can do that. And Andrew, do you want to kind of give a little bit more info as to how we can use those tools?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. So you are able to within the budgeting suite forecast and project out years. So that's a good example is projecting out inflation. So for example, if you wanted to do a 6% increase over five years, that's the type of scenario that you could do and then kind of run the reports side by side and see, you know, what the differences might be.
Project, we can actually see what we're doing in 22 as opposed to what we did in 2016.
Correct.
Now, I think my last question, because you answered a couple of them in that answer right there, but can we track depreciation of equipment?
So, so the short answer is we can. With this tool, I'm not entirely sure with the budgeting and planning if we can do depreciation. I think it's a form of accounting, but we we can do that in-house. Or correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew.
Yeah, that's right. So depreciation would be something within our full financial system that could be done. But for the budgeting suite, we're really pulling that out of, directly out of what you currently have. You know, versus utilizing the budget suite to actually, you know, input and track depreciation.
I think that's all my questions. I like this program, look forward to it. I think that budget book might come off my nightstand, but I'm still probably going to want a hard copy.
We can still, I can't say, I know that Andrew, because as as Corinne had mentioned, we we have our median age demographic is 33, right? But we still have a residency population that still wants, as one of the gentlemen and several of the members mentioned here this evening during public comment, I want paper, I want human contact, and we respect that. And so we'll make sure that we're able to provide all of those so it's accessible to the public. But OpenGov makes that a lot more achievable in in being able to do so.
See, I ain't lying, Andrew.
I do remember meeting you in Sacramento and you said printout and paper was the way to go. I, I will note that you are able to print out our digital budget books as well. So you still have a paper option if you'd like.
Thank you very much.
I'd just be curious to know, Laura, I mean, Laura has the most cumbersome, you know, aspect in this whole process. So how do you feel about this program?
Actually, it's
It's going to cut down your hours. Awesome. That is great to hear.
Make a motion to approve the agreement between City of Imperial and OpenGov Inc. for budget and planning services for a five-year term not to exceed
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Let's move on to F2, Discussion Action Resolutions of the City of Imperial City Council Calling for a Special Municipal Election on Tuesday, June 7, 2022.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as directed to staff back in July, sorry, if I take you back to July 2021, you did want to call and participate in the spring election to ask the question in regards to the city clerk. As you recall, our dear Debbie Jackson did retire and did vacate the position, at which time you did appoint City Manager Merida to occupy the position of city clerk. He has done so in this interim. We are anticipating, we are looking forward to putting the question on the ballot. And to do so, you do have the four necessary resolutions in front of you. The first, to hold the special election, putting the question, should the city clerk position be elected or appointed? The second is requesting the Board of Supervisors to consolidate the special election. The third is for the city attorney of the filing of written arguments regarding the city measure and preparing an impartial analysis. And number four is filing any rebuttal of arguments for the measures. I'll stand for any questions if you have them.
Motion?
Second.
A motion and a second, and that's on approval of Resolution 2022-08.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, if there's a councilperson who wants to handle any of those resolutions separately, that's, that's fine. But if the motion was to approve all of, all four, that's okay as well.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-08, 2022-209, Resolution 2022-1-0, and Resolution 2022-1-1.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Oh, it's, okay. I think it's logged in. Okay. 4-0. The motion carries 4-0. Yeah. I think Mr. Amparano is logged in as Mr. Tucker. Is the situation.
Are we going to repair that real quick?
It's, it's okay. We, the record shows that it is the floor present. I think we had scooted you closer to the mayor and logged you in on that keypad. So, so yes.
Ah, there. Okay.
Now we're all squared.
Let's move to F3, Discussion Action Rural Recreation and Tourism Program Grant Application.
Sir Mayor, members of the council, staff is requesting the city council's review and consideration of the two resolutions authorizing the grant applications under the Rural Recreation and Tourism Program to the State of California Parks Office. Staff intends to apply for the engineering design in Phase One construction of the Townsite Park project as well as the SR86 Improvement Project for multi-use trails and bikeways. There is no limit on the amount of applications one entity can submit. It is staff's intent with council's authorization to submit two projects, both for the full $3 million cap. Please see the attached guide for further information tonight. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Questions? Do we do this together?
You can.
Okay.
Attempt to approve Resolution 2022-12 and Resolution 2022-13.
Second.
I have two seconds. Please vote.
Vote, that's myself this time.
Motion carries 4-0.
Okay. F4, Discussion Action Clean California Grant Program.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in similar fashion, we are asking for the city council's authorization to apply for the Clean California Grant Program. This is a program that is under Caltrans. It is going to be, our application is for SR86. As you have all directed, SR86 is a priority. And so we are really soliciting those funding opportunities. It is our intent to apply for 5.2. There is a 50% cash match with this. And so that is where, however, already directed and spent funds can be used towards that. So we do intend to do that, which is why we're looking to apply for 5.25 million for this application.
Going to look forward to it. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-14.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Can we use the funds that we already attained to to match that?
Motion carries 4-0.
Okay, let's move on to F5, Discussion Action Declaration of Surplus Land.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you, you do have a parcel that is located to the, at the corner, sorry, of about 86 and Belford. It is the request of city staff to declare that parcel as surplus and begin the process in accordance with the State of California Surplus Land Act.
Questions? Comments? Oceans?
Motion for approval?
Take a second.
Yeah, have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Okay, F6, Engineering and Construction Services.
Council, what we have here is we're trying to pull the, we have a bond for the Clearwell Pump Station project and we wanted to pull out the piping portion of it. As we talked to you guys before, we have the corrosion down there at the base and we're one good earthquake away from not being able to provide water. So we want to pull it out. Have we worked on that separately so we can move forward with the repairs to that and it'll coincide with the Clearwell project on the backside. So it'll, it's kind of a step forward in the overall Clearwell project that will tie into the rest of the system once it moves forward.
Well, absolutely.
Since we have, it'll be ready within two weeks from notice to proceed, what do we have in the meantime, just in case something happens? Do we have a backup? Pray.
With, I mean, you know, the way we put it down or with our ingenuity, we'll put something together. But, you know, like I said, I mean, honestly, the process has been taking a lot longer to get to, get it on paper and start moving forward with it. You know, getting it out there to bid and things like that. So that's what we're looking at doing this. But, I mean, the truth is, except one good earthquake or minor issue will, will be pretty well.
We don't have a backup for this?
We don't have a backup, but like I said, we'll, we'll put, we'll have to put something together. I mean, we, it's already on, it's already in our mind of how we'll move forward in in that case. Basically, with the amount of water we have right now and the usage, based off the current usage, we've got probably like two days, you know, to to be able to get back into service. So we're asking for approval of pulling this out and moving forward with the repairs at the fiscal impact of $26,960.
Make a motion for approval of proposal for construction services from Web Associates for Filter Complex Pipe Corrosion Project in the amount of $26,960.
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
F7 is now B1, so we'll go to F8.
Right. So we're going to move to F8, Purchase of Replacement Playground Equipment for Sunset Park and Joshua Park.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff is requesting city council's approval to purchase replacement equipment that has been damaged due to weathering, regular use and age. The components are being replaced are two slides at Sunset Park and one slide and bridge steps at Joshua Park. Equal was provided by the manufacturer in the amount of $17,714.81. And I'll stand for any questions.
Just materials, right?
Yes.
They should be based.
It'll be staff.
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
The rest of the part.
Motion carries 4-0.
Okay, now we're going to step into the successor agency rule. G1, Discussion Action Authorized Submittal of the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, ROPS for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Chairman and Agency Board, the request, we're requesting your approval to submit the attached ROPS. It is due to the Department of Finance by February the 1st. We are requesting it's 1.4 million in bond debt service, 16,400 for trustee fees and bond disclosure reports, 250,000 in admin fees, and then 383,172 from our own low mod bond monies. Total request is for 2,66,104. And with your approval, we can get it submitted.
Motion to authorize the submittal of the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule ROPS for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Second that.
Discussion, how long do we got to make payments?
Have until 2037 is when our debt servicing.
Exactly what they Isaac's. Have a motion?
Motion carries three one.
Just for the sake of bringing it up for the public, that used to be what we're talking about was monies that we worked hard to create and build jobs, industry that politicians took the money to pay off their political people and way of votes, so just wanna make that clarified. I will until I step off this dais say what it is, and that's legalize extortion. So before I adjourn this meeting, I wanted, uh, the council to know, I kinda brought this up to a couple people, go ahead.
Public hearing.
Oh, that's right. Man, you're, you're blowing all my wind out of my.
Sorry, Jeff.
Let's do that one, where's, yeah, but wait a second.
The very, flip the page one more time. Yeah.
Whereabout? The urban water?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing, uh, we open the public hearing at, uh, eight fifteen. Eleven. My G shock is broke.
Mr. Mayor, our consultant from Western Associates will do the presentation tonight.
I do apologize, it wasn't on my page right in front of me, so you, you took the time to be here tonight, and I almost cut you off, I do apologize.
Problem at all.
I tend to get wound up when I feel like it sometimes, and I do apologize, but go ahead. Qu- quickly, on these two items, can, are they gonna be voted separately?
Oh, eh, the intention of the special meeting was to make clear to the public that it was a public hearing on the matter described in your regular meeting agenda. F seven, so they're really one item, it's just a public hearing.
Public hearing.
So thank you, Council, for having us, um, I know we almost didn't, but, um, I appreciate it. Um, I'm here on behalf of Western Associates, my name is Jake Comer. Uh, we are hired a consultant to prepare the city's twenty twenty urban water management plan, also known as the UMP for short. Um, a little bit of the UMP background, this is basically a planning tool for water agencies. Um, it's a good source of information for updates to general plans and other plan documents. Um, we try to prepare a plan that will be used through the city and as a source of information, uh, whether it be city council members or just general public citizens to just refer to their city's water system, their information, and to figure out where they get their water from, who it goes to, and how the whole system works. Um, it is required by state law. And it was part of the Urban Water Management Planning Act of nineteen eighty-three. And there's been multiple amendments since then, uh, the most significant one was the Water Conservation Act of two thousand nine, also known as the XPS seven-seven Steinberg. Who is required to prepare the urban water management plan? Basically, any urban water supplier with three thousand customers or, uh, three thousand acre feet per year, uh, or more. The UMPs are filed every five years, um, there's, I think the city of Imperial's last one was actually in twenty-ten. Um, and they're filed through the Department of Water Resources. The deadline for the twenty-twenty UMPs is usually July first, twenty-twenty-one, but there's not really much of a consequence if there's, um, submitted after that, as in this case. The only issue might arise if there's competing funds for certain water projects funded through the Department of Water Resources, but rarely the case, um, so city's fine. Um, here is just some updates to the water code. Um, since these come out every five years, DWR produces updates, so you can see, like, here's the list of some of them, I won't waste your time running through some of them. Uh, some of the bigger ones, I guess, to note is the six water, uh, six-stage water shortages, so if you notice, there's the two resolutions. The urban water management plan is the first one, the water shortage contingency plan is the second one. And that will include the six-stage water shortages, which I'll get into later, but basically, it's sort of a standard across California for water shortages, rather as before when it was sort of city-based or water district-based, um, so it's, it's like a standard across the board to make it easier to respond during drought conditions. Um, and you see here the five, five-year drought projections is another asset, um, as well as the climate change narrative. So just to, obviously, the, the document itself is a fairly substantial document, I believe it's about one hundred and sixty-five pages, um, and then the penises you know, a lot more extensive, so I'll just cut into that briefly. Here's a few of the sections that, uh, are breaking up into the urban water management plan. I believe also that the city has it, um, on file, there might be, I believe there's a printout here as well. Um, the one part of this actually urban water management plan is public outreach. We obviously want the citizens and other agencies to be aware of this, and we try to coordinate with IID and Imperial County to make sure that we're giving, you know, the right information, it's correct. So we, the public outreach outreach included a sixty-day, two-week and a one-week notice prior to today's meeting. So we've been putting out notices since then to other public agencies around, um, as well as publishing in the Coliseum Chronicle and the Holtville Tribune. And then we've also, um, pr- given the original draft of the urban water management plan to the city, which is on the city's website. Um, and also I believe there was copies here at the city hall or down the street. Um, going further, so some UMP highlights here. The current water service area population is twenty thousand seven hundred and seven, um, and this includes the hundred percent of the city's, um, population as well as small portion outside of that area. Um, currently, there are eleven penny pro- uh, penny developments which will increase the pro- the population growth by twenty forty-five. And we're projecting about thirty-five thousand two hundred, uh, persons in the year twenty forty-five. Here is just a, uh, overlay of the overall water service area for the city. And as you can see, the blue is additional water service area that I just mentioned. And then the yellow here is the sphere of influence that the city's water service area, um, includes. Here is the zoning, uh, area for the city of Imperial, and we've also included, um, mentionings of the city's general plan, including the housing element, and dependencies to this, um, plan, and we refer to it throughout the document. Some more UMP highlights, um, I won't get too into details, um, to save you guys some time, but obviously, the, the city's sole source of water is the Colorado River, which is provided to the city through the Imperial In- Imperial Irrigation District through the All-American Canal System. Um, there is actually the New Side Canal, which is on the west side of the water treatment plant, and the Dahlia Canal, which is on the east side. So that's where the water comes through, the water, the water treatment plant. The raw water comes through and is processed before it's distributed out to the customers. Um, the city provides full Title twenty-two treatment. I had seven MGD water treatment plant, and it consists of multiple items, including a storage tank, three concrete raw, raw water ponds, um, and recently in two thousand eighteen, the four granular activated carbon filters, so this process makes the water clean and potable for customers' use to drink safely. And there's also the city pumps pour water in its distribution system through three treated water pump stations. And the UMP goes into a list a little more extensively, I won't sit here and bore you with all the technical details about the water system, but it's all in there, if you guys care to take a glance. Um, import, just some more information here. Imported surface water supply in twenty twenty was a thousand, two, uh, million gallons. Um, and then due to IID's longstanding, uh, ample water rights, there are no terms in place which limits the amount of water available to the city. So that's something that's been kind of throughout the history, I guess, of, um, IID in the city, there's been, I believe it was the EDP plan where this went through and and was repealed, so basically IID has sort of unlimited amount of water access to the, the Colorado River, which makes it very fortunate for the city to have and, and I guess helps you basically project for the future safely and allows your customers to be assured that they'll have water into the, the future. The only limitation on the water supply is basically the production capacity of the city's water treatment plant. Um, you know, no matter how much water the city can take in, they could only treat so much at a time. Uh, due to the size of the, and the capacity of the treatment plant. And the city does not currently pump groundwater from Imperial Valley Groundwater Basin to the poor water quality, which is the same for uh, all the cities within the Imperial County. Here's just a picture of the city's water treatment plant, you can see some of the features, the three concrete ponds, there's the, uh, the earthen pond which treats the, treats the wa- the wasted sludge, the, one of the storage tanks, and then other filters there. Um, going ahead, some more UMP highlights, um, over the past five years, the city's generated approximately thousand, uh, two hundred and twenty acre feet of wastewater, which is treated at the city's wastewater treatment plant. And the water is treated there and discharged to percolation ponds, uh, next to the treatment plant. The city does not currently provide recycled water, since the water treatment plant does not meet the, um, secondary treatment standards or Title twenty-two standards. The city plans to generate treated recycled water through its new wastewater treatment plant, although all of it will be disposed of until our recycle water infrastructure is developed. And I'll get more to that in a little bit here. Here's the current city, uh, wastewater treatment plant. And so some more UMP highlights for the demands of water, so the current water demands for twenty twenty are about thousand, two, uh, million gallons. And then we projected, uh, demands up to twenty forty-five, but through gradual improvements in water efficiency, um, and, you know, projected, uh, more efficiency and a lower footprint. Uh, we're expecting that the average, um, gal- or what is it, ga- gallons per, per capita daily use should decrease, which basically means even though the population might increase, the amount, uh, the, the efficiency of the water they're using, whether it be through toilets or wa- uh, shower features or just irrigation practices, will be more efficient, so they're not gonna be using as much water as in previous years, and we've seen that, um, the consumption rates have actually decreased by nearly a hundred gallons per person per day, which is the GPCD there from previous decades. And they're expected to continue to decrease to two thousand forty-five. And we have here the projected water demands for twenty forty-five are a thousand four hundred and thirty-six million gallons. So some more UMP highlights, and now I'm getting to the water shortage contingency plan, which I touched on earlier, so here you can see, we talked about the six stages of the storages, this is one of those new updates from DWR. Um, like basically each percent here, there is a new stage, so when when the water supply capacity reaches below ten percent, stage one will be enacted. When it reaches below twenty percent, and that stage two will be enacted and, and so on and so on. And we wanted to create a plan that wouldn't be constantly updating customers and having them, you know, to constantly change their daily habits, so we basically prohibited the customer, uh, specific responses from stage one to three. So some of these will permit, these, some of these would include, you know, irrigating maybe twice, twice, uh, in a week, or, um, you know, not water or not washing their cars in their driveway, rather go to like a facility that can recycle the water. These are some examples which, um, we threw extensively and, um, and then customers will be notified, of course, when the stages get worse than that, just to, so they're aware of the situation at hand. But these stages will mostly require the city's water staff response. Some of these could include getting emergency pumps or emergency wells or importing emergency water from IID or other facilities and, and some, stuff like that. And then here's just another example of the city's reservoir tank and pump station. The city has three reservoirs, uh, one of which is actually at the water treatment plant, and then two are throughout the city that help distribute the water throughout its water system and give the customers the water. So in conclusion, um, the water supply capacities, uh, which are only through surface water at this time, are sufficient to meet demands even under drought conditions all the way through twenty forty-five. That's basically the planning period for this, this UMP, the next one will obviously go to the next five years of twenty fifty, but that's basically where our timeframe is. And one thing that we've noticed throughout California was, is sort of an upcoming, you know, new technology is recycled water. Um, which eventually, when the wastewater treatment plant will be upgraded, the city will be able to create recycled water, but unfortunately, the current cost to construct and maintain the recycled water distribution pipelines is too high at this time. But we do see that, once this becomes feasible in the future, and I believe it will, with more increased demand and more popularity, um, the city can use this to basically, uh, use and place a portable water. So it'll decrease the amount of portable water used, the amount of, uh, water treated and reliance on IID for water because you're using water that's already in your system, just recycling it. Um, the city should use provisions set out in the water shortage contingency plan for sh- uh, sudden shortages or disasters, so we try to make it a concise plan that's helpful for both the customers of the city and the city itself to implement during drought conditions, which we may foresee happening as, as, you know, we've experienced here already. Um, next steps. So the next steps, uh, this is basically now outside of report just for the council, we've already gone over it, I guess, but we'll adopt, the city will adopt the UMP by council resolution and the WISP, um, I guess in the same resolution. And then, within thirty days of adoption, um, we will submit the adopted, um, to DWR through online submittal. Um, and then we'll provide CD copies to the state library in county, and then the, um, will, the final um, will be available to the public through the website, even though the draft is on right now, but once the finalized version is complete, that'll be there and available. And yeah, now I guess if you guys have any questions, this is the time.
No, but I have a comment, um, I would say I'm actually a water, kind of like water nerd, and I do like environmental stuff such as this for a living, so I wanna tell you that it didn't go, not looked at, so, um, even though when you do that big document, you're like, I do this, and nobody looks at it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It's so, but yeah, no, you guys did a really good job, so I appreciate it, and I make the motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero four.
If, if we do, then if we could close the public hearing, and then we can go to voting.
I have a question. I got a couple questions. Said this is a requirement by Department of Water Resources. And in one of your slides, you stated that we do not have water shortages because the abundance of water by Imperial Irrigation District through the Colorado River, through the All-American Canal, right? Why do we have to have six stages of shortages, if we don't have shortages?
Um, well, this is basically saying that you have the right to an ample amount of water, but the, you know, I W, IID doesn't control the Colorado River, so if, you know, right now, the water's kind of low. So if IID or, so if the Colorado River was increasingly low, no matter what the rights are, the city has to water, if there's not water available, then you're gonna hit that ten percent or twenty percent. So this is sort of an emergency case, which hopefully won't happen, and as we've stated, like, it doesn't seem like the case, but you know, if the river were to deplete, then IID wouldn't be able to provide the city with the water, so.
Okay. Yeah, but I, the way I'm seeing this plan, and the way I'm, I was listening to it, it's just another overstep again, is trying to control our city of what we are to do. And this is another overstep of the state of California, extending their arm where they shouldn't. Because we have, we've, in the past, we've had to implement water, uh, uses for residents, even though we do not have water shortages. And it's been stated here, it's been stated everywhere else. Trust me, it's not against you guys. Okay. I just have a little beef with California. So, but, by the way, great plan. Thank you.
Now.
You're up.
We'll clear, oh, I, trust me, I might as well go ahead and do it before we close this thing. Um, again, it's nothing personal, you did very well on this report, but short of the water running out of the Colorado River, the IID does have control of the water here. Um, you jumped ahead of me, I have it written down here, endless supply. Um, and water shortage contingency, I'm right with you. Um, the thing that frustrated me last time when we went through this, and we had to implement restrictions, we had folks that had nice-looking lawns in our community. They're destroyed now, they're gone, dead trees, no lawns, dirt roads, dirt lawns. And what really chaps my ass, and I'm gonna say it just that way, that I drive to Palm Springs three times a week. Sometimes only two. And I see beautiful golf courses, hundreds of them, 'cause I think now they got what, a hundred and fifty golf courses or whatever the hell it is up there? Homes that are beautifully green, beautiful trees and everything else, was there shortages there? Hell no. And part of this is, is political, it's political, and who has more money? And our poor residents got shafted. And I'm only saying that 'cause they're listening right now, and they need to have that reencouragement that this state has failed them on many levels, but I appreciate your, uh, report, you did good. uh, report, you did good. Someday, maybe if we can all take the gloves off and just call it for what it is, that'd be nice, but we can't, so. Anyway, um, do we do any motions or anything off this now?
The the action after you close a public hearing would be to adopt the two resolutions.
The two together, okay, do I have that motion?
Believe.
Katie and then Robert, did you second it? No, okay. I need a second. Wow, I was getting nervous, that'd be a long.
Come on, guys.
You got my vote, I, and nothing that was just, none of that was personal, it's just that it's a fact, what what we were under, in fact, what's embarrassing is to think that our farmers did such a good job conserving water, that they went to the IID and said, look, use our overrun for the city, so that way they could have some water, extra water, and the state refused it, but like I said, the hundred and fifty golf courses stayed beautiful green, okay? I'm shutting up. I hope they watch, I hope our our illustrious leader would watch these meetings, because he can think what a, I'll stay off of it there.
Motion carries three one, and let the record reflect that the public hearing was closed at eight thirty P M.
Eight thirty. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Before I adjourn the meeting tonight, just wanted to give kudos to our council for doing what I felt was right a few weeks ago on the mandates. If any of you saw what happened today, eleven hours from now, the parliament in England reversed everything. Mask mandates, everything, no more no more passes, you don't have to have a vaccination card, it's all common sense. And I hope that our leaders in our country do the same, and thank God for the Omicron, because this is gonna end this, and it's happening as we speak, not to mention that I'm very proud, and that some new businesses coming to our town, that Starbucks decided all fifty thousand employees do not have to be vaccinated, again, a big win for people's individual rights, and I'm very proud that they're there, so I think I'm gonna go get a Starbucks coffee, so. We're gonna adjourn this meeting till February second, twenty twenty two, at seven P M, thank you for coming.